Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
President.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild here. Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Smol.
Here. Mr. Schuster is going to do a proclamation for us.
Whereas the Council of the City of Scranton, Iris of honoring Salvador James Chira, Sam, who celebrated his 100th birthday on July 15th, Mr. Chira was born and raised in Scranton where he remained for the rest of his life for over 70 years. He was a loving husband with his late wife Pauline, with whom he shared three daughters and one son. They're all, they are also grandparents and great-grandparents to eight children. Whereas Sam graduated in 1942 from Scranton Technical High School where he served as a class president. After high school, he enlisted in the United States Army where he earned a rank of Tech Four, a rank created to recognize enlisted soldiers with special technical skills. He was assigned to the 36th Infantry and was awarded the Purple Heart after being injured in Italy. After leaving the service, he became a proud member of the American Legion post 886 in Tripp Park where he served as the commander. And whereas Sam had a career with the Pennsylvania Unemployment Office as an unemployment specialist, and whereas Sam became equally renowned for his dedication to St. Lucy's Church, where he served as the Lecter for many years and maintained the garden at St. Lucy's after his retirement. And whereas Sam was an inspiration to multiple generations of Tripp Park baseball players, where he established a Little League Neighborhood Parade with players, parents, sponsors, and band members. Now therefore be it resolved that Scranton City Council wishes to congratulate Sam Chira on his milestone 100th birthday and that this proclamation be made a permanent part of the record of this council and lasting tribute to Sam Chira for his dedication and service to his family, his church, and his country. Signed, Scranton City Council.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Sam. We will...
I would like to make a motion to take from the table file of the council number 26 of 2024.
There's a motion on the floor in a s-
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second to take from the table, file of council number 26 2024, and place it in seventh order for a final vote. This ordinance is a 2024 HUD Annual Action Plan. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abolished, ayes have it, and so on. Dispend with the minutes.
Third order, 3A, La Cuenca County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation report received August 5th, 2024. 3B, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report for year-to-date August 7th, 2024, and year-to-year comparison report for August 8th, 2023, to August 7th, 2024. 3C, controllers report for month ending July 31st, 2024. 3D, minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting held July 17th, 2024. 3E, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held July 17th, 2024. 3F, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held July 17th, 2024. 3G, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held on July 17th, 2024. 3H, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held on August 21st, 2024. 3I, correspondence dated August 14th, 2024, from Thomas J. Anderson Associates, Inc., regarding financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation for the City of Scranton's pension plan for 2025. 3J, correspondence received from City Business Administration on August 27th, 2024, regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections as of August 27th, 2024. 3K, overtime report for all departments as provided by City Controller received August 28th, 2024. 3L, correspondence dated August 25th, 2024, from OCD ARPA Director regarding American Rescue Plan Act update.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So, Sunday, September 15th, at 4:00 PM, at Montage Mountain Ro- I'm sorry, Montage, Montage Mountain Resort, there'll be an event raising some hell for Hoppy. So please come out and show your support for one of Scranton's bravest. As many of you may already know, our beloved Lieutenant Kelly Hopkins of the Scranton Fire Department is fighting his biggest fire yet. Kelly was diagnosed with stage four throat cancer and since then has started treatment. We all know he would give the shirt off his back to help anyone in need, and right now he could use some love. There'll be a live entertainment, raffles, t-shirt, and koozie sales, food and cash bar. Tickets will be $20 at the door, cash only. Hoppy is looking forward to his party and to see everyone that he knows and loves so much. So help us help Hoppy, do what he does best, and raise some hell for his fight against cancer. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to congratulate Chris DiMaggio for the Italian Festival. Extremely well attended. I was there on, I think it was Sunday. I know it was marred a little bit with the fireworks. A few children got burned. Hopefully they can come up with a solution for that next year, but I know that all weekend downtown was filled with people from all over the place, and it was, I think it was a great weekend for the City of Scranton, so I want to congratulate Chris and his committee for putting on a great Italian festival.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodawanis?
Joan Hodawanis, Scranton. I'd like to compliment the Fire and Police Departments for their rapid response on Sunday night during that fireworks incident. I'm sure that their actions prevented a much more serious incident. That's why we have them at events such as that. And it's not just the Italian festival, it's porketta heaven. And if you didn't get your porketta, you missed out. Just a heads up, September 10th through the 14th, that's next week, is the next book sale for the library. Again, it will be at the marketplace at Steamtown, right in front of the Crunch Gym. Books will sell for $1 to $2. It's a real bargain. I checked the website this morning for the city, and there's still no union contracts for the police, the fire, and the non-uniform clerical unions. Do we have any updates on the status of those contracts?
I do not at this time.
Okey-dokey. How about a status on the annual audit?
Annual audit? At the budget meeting, we spoke about the audit. Everything for the city is on, on track. The only thing that we may be waiting for, and they said it wouldn't be long, is the audit from the Parking Authority.
From the Parking Authority?
Yes.
Oh, shame on them.
Well, it's new this year for them, and I understand that, but they should have it in. They should have it in in time.
Okay. Well, we'll check on a weekly basis.
Theirs doesn't look good.
Okay. How about a status on the investigation of the personal files that were left in Dix Court back in March?
We spoke of that earlier today, and we did not get a response from the administration that I'm aware of. I don't believe Frank had gotten anything back.
Not as yet, sir.
No. So we will re-ask that question.
Okay, because that's pushing six months now. How about the tripled recycling center co-mainly rate? Have we gotten any successful pushback on that rate increase?
I don't know. They, what I was told was they're not going to look at it till the end of the year, and the recycling center themselves. So I understand, I know the administration was meeting with them and also with the county because we are all pretty much in the same boat. So I don't know what the cure is for that, if it is not putting glass in or if it's adding a separate day to the recycling and have four different pickups a month, but I understand what they're saying, and when you compact glass into the other recyclables, you can't separate it.
Yeah, that certainly came like a bolt out of the blue.
Yeah, we were all surprised with that.
Yeah. I saw on the third order, the Capitol Budget. Do you have a planned date for a public hearing yet for the Capitol Budget?
I believe that is...
That'll be on September 24th.
Okay. What time?
5:45.
Okay, thank you. I've only glanced at it very, very shortly, but one thing that really piques my interest is page eight, City Hall Operations Expansion. We're looking to purchase another building for $1.8 million, you know, be half a million dollars every year just to operate and maintain the facility. My consternation is, you know, now that this is the age of information and everything's going digital, cyberspace should allow us to reduce our physical space requirements, but yet we're going to be looking at another building. So I'd like to, that'd be one item I'd like to see discussed when it comes up. And finally, I saw in the paper that Mufflin's 2024 Scranton Community Health and Safety Landscape Report has been issued to the city. First of all, I'd request that that report, if you have it electronically, be added to third order for next week. I think everybody in the city should read that report because it's addressing what they call a holistic approach to crime prevention, and we all have skin in this particular game. So please, if you could put that into third order for next week, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Frank, will you see if we can take care of that?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, Council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And tonight I'd like, two things I'd like to speak about, and the one is Serenti Center. Over the, how many months, Marie has spoken about this Serenti Center, and it was always, she was always given the response that it was a training center. And that seemed like a good spot for the firemen, I guess, and the police department training. And I have seen training going on over there, and it's very impressive, as you see how they learn to evacuate people and all. However, over the last months, it's become a junkpot. It looks like they're putting everything that they don't know what to do with in the yard there. The thing that's the most disturbing to me as I go by there are the piles of salt. And I get out the one day, and I went up to the fence to look, and it's the salt tablets and the pellets that they use in the public pools. We don't have a pool at Naog, so the closest pla- yeah, the closest place would be over at, down at Weston Park. So why they can't find someplace else to put that? And also, all of the outdoor equipment to mow the grass, to, you know, just everything is just piled up there then. The one day, they, they pulled in a, it looked like a little house. I don't know what that's used for, but they have quite a few different garages-type houses parked there. If they're for storage, then they should be used for storage and not the other, the salt just hanging out there in the street. So it's very disturbing to me. It's very disturbing to my neighbors as we go along and see what's becoming of that, the Serenti Center parking lot. Also with the, the salt shed that was proposed to put up there, we did get some positive news about that. I did go down to the Popular Street, and I did look at the salt shed that's down there. It is in need of a repair. It is in need. You know, it's deplorable. I don't know how they're going to get through winter with the weather going against the salt that's in that container. So there is a need, but I'm sure that the need and the place, I'm glad that it'll find someplace else to put it rather than our backyard. So the other thing that I wanted to talk about were the street signs. As I go out and about, you know, people, the residents of Scranton, you know, don't hesitate telling me about the street signs. But this time, over the past months this summer, it was very positive, the reports that I got, that people were stopping me at the grocery store if I was out at a meeting, or to tell me that, you know, they're very pleased with what they're seeing with the street signs. Is my, is what neighborhood is next? I don't know what neighborhood is next. I don't know what the plan is or how they're doing it, but one thing for sure, it is being done, and it's being noticed by the citizens of Scranton. So that's a very plus and a positive thing for us as, you know, for so many years, you know, we couldn't see where we were and where we were going. A couple people did mention to me about the stop signs. I said, "Well, you know, I'm not the stop sign lady, but, you know, you know, write a letter, call City Hall, call 311 or, or whatever, and voice your concern." So, you know, thank you for listening to me tonight, and that's all I have to say.
Norma, I can answer you for your, for the storage up at the Serenti Center, all of the stuff from parks. When they took the old structure down at Weston Field, we moved everything up to the Serenti Center. It's the only secured location we have to put that much equipment. All of the other stuff that you see up there is from various pools that we've had in the city that are under construction right now. So there are, that's, there's thousands of dollars worth of material. We simply can't throw it out. So that is a temporary storage spot until we get Connell Park back up, that pool back up in that building. They couldn't do any renovations in that building nor in Naog's building, the pool house. And I told you, we took everything out of there also. So while that's under construction, they can't have anything in there. So we had to put it somewhere, and that's what that stuff is for. And then all of the parks and rec, all of their trailers, their equipment, everything else, they're considering a site right now behind where the Recreation Authority, where you're putting that building up, behind there, looking at putting one directly behind there for the parks recreation to get them out of the Serenti Center.
But couldn't the salt, though, be neatly stacked up? It's just thrown there, and it seems that the equipment could be put in the back of, you know, in the back part of that parking lot rather than right up front where it's so visible as we go back.
I will ask, I will ask Director-
You know, if they could just move it to the back, and so that it's not so visible as we go up and down that street.
I will ask Director Gassimire tomorrow if they could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Ron Elman?
Council, let's quit looking at our computers and address this outrageous tax problem that we all share. The majority of property in this city is pre-war. A quarter, maybe a third of the city are low-income retired people, seniors. These houses, these properties always need something because of their age. I know there's a, I get all these letters about water pipes and electrics and so forth, but they add a tremendous amount onto your bills because I got it out of my water. Our, our, our city is just, these people are just suffering like I am under the tremendous burden of repairs and utilities and insurance. Everything has got skyrocketed. It's, it's, it's hard to keep a property. I don't know what the foreclosure rate is, but I know the couple houses in my area where I walk the dog that have been foreclosed on, they went downhill with undesirable people living there. The zoning board has just killed the city, allowing single houses to be made into two and three apartments, and there's no place to park but sidewalks, and this is being allowed. Nobody considers, you ought to walk down North Main Avenue with cars going by you a foot or two away, 60, 70 miles an hour, one after another. Now the streets torn all to pieces with the water company. You know, I mentioned it once, I don't know how many tens of millions of dollars are being spent there. All the pipes, they got tickets inside of them. They're made in Birmingham, Alabama. There's some stuff, I don't know what it's called, great big connectors and all. Some are made in China, and some are in Texas, and some in Indiana. Not a thing in that water company is bought is from Pennsylvania. Why? Somebody was asleep at the switch. I just didn't mean to change the subject, but Mr. Biden, and I don't blame him, he left here and went to Pittsburgh talking to steelworkers without this knowledge. You know, nobody wants to mention, I don't know how many of you read the business page, China got a $12,000 EV that, that can outshine some of the expensive cars on the market right now. They built that in Mexico, it'd be the end of the American car market. Yeah, nobody's, not one thing's being done to protect jobs like that. Getting back to the city's tax problems, Janet Evans was the last person I know that really tried to do something about it, going to Lockawalla College, and they just told her to go to hell. We got a city full of inapp employees that need assistance, consultants. This city needs someone to run it like a business because it is a business. It's not a nursery like our mayor thinks it is. It is a lousy business, and it's going downhill terrible under this woman. This is the worst administration and the worst mayor this city's ever had since its birth. Thank you.
Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. To Ron's points here today, I think that people need to watch RFK drop out of the presidential race and listen to what he says about the Democratic Party, and then, you know, open your eyes a little bit and see what's going on in Aurora, Colorado, where you call the police, they don't even come because the gangs from Nicaragua are setting up shop in a couple states, and when the cops come, they'll just shoot them. This is what Joe Biden's brought to America. So, you know, people need to realize that our country's in big trouble. And, you know, they just executed an American in Gaza the other day. They blew the top of his head off. And you take a look at where our country is, and, you know, I'm just an ordinary person. But they're threatening Jewish people in all the colleges. You know, I said something about something called Kapos one time, and when you study history, you find out that the Germans used Jews to police the concentration camps, and they treated fellow Jews worse than the Germans did. And when you see what's happening to our country in elective office, and we've got a president, even a vice president with no platform to run on, and, and just, it's just ridiculous what's happened to our country because public education collapsed maybe in the 1990s, and we've, we've played silly games to believe that Americans are educated, and it's going to come back to haunt us. But what I wanted to talk about here today was, this is water that came out of a tap. Now, if you look at it, you can see a cello. People are paying for this stuff in Scranton. Now, we've got to ask ourselves, what can we do to our government to make it responsive to us? Now, the PUC failed because they're just political hacks that are appointed, and they allowed the sale to Scranton Sewer Authority, and of course, mismanagement of the authority under council and former mayors, and turning it into what it turned into, just an employment agency in the most part for political people. We need a new Home Rule Charter here. We need to change the function of council because what you do here is almost beyond silly. You borrow and borrow and borrow and mismanage the city. And after a city has reached the point where ours has, where the population, as Ron just said, you know, they can't pay their taxes, they can't live here, and you're oblivious to that whole problem. You know, borrowing, writing bonds, shuffling papers back and forth, that's not going to change the city. We need to change the way the council functions. I'm not really sure we need a mayor anymore. We may not need a mayor. We may need a strong council. But the Ameri- but the residents of Scranton have to realize one thing. The people that were wasting their time over almost the four decades, decades I've come here were the people that were sitting home. They were wasting their time, and now they can't live in their homes. You talk about the people that were flooded out in the last series of floods. You talk about, you know, the decay of the city streets and sidewalks, and the borrowing and the tax rates. It all comes back to the council that can't function. And, you know, appointing people to council or having a majority for the mayor and, or either a majority against the mayor, that's not the way the charter was designed to function. The inability of a council to use its powers of subpoena and investigative powers to make the life of the residents better doesn't exist here. Okay? There's something really needs to change. And me personally speaking, I didn't vote for any of these people on council. It's not a personal thing. I just didn't think you could do your jobs, and I've watched you function over an extended period of time. Forty years is a long time to come somewhere. And I just think that, you know, I appreciate some of the things you say, but you know what? It's time to really have a come-to-Jesus moment and realize something. The city's fading, and you just keep heaping dead on it in mismanagement. And the mayor, I really don't think she knows what she's doing. We've gone through so many department heads, it's almost ridiculous, and the people can't take anymore.
Next, Susan Connors?
Oh, shoot. Did they both leave? I was going to say something. Oh, oh, all his water's here. Anyway, I'm Suzie Connors from Scranton. I'm here without a, not a complaint or anything like that, but I was, was going to say, aren't we fortunate that we live in a city, in a state, in a country where we can express our views whether they are the same or different from ours? And unfortunately, he left, right? But anyway, I'm here to talk about- You're not supposed to clap. Anyway, I read the rules. I'm here- I'm here to talk about an event that is also taking place on September 15th called Tour de Scranton. It's going to be our final non-competitive bike ride. It's our 20th year, and it's to benefit the Erin Jessica Morgan Drug and Alcohol Treatment Fund. Erin was a resident of our area, graduate of Scranton High School, and a student at Temple University when she met a premature death at the age of 28 due to a drug overdose. The Tour de Scranton is held each year in her memory so that young people of our region may live their lives and achieve their dreams by conquering their substance use disorder. The ride, as I said, will be held on September 15th of this year, and the money that is raised has been used to offer scholarships, high school scholarships in the area to those students who are going on to post-high school education and despite the dysfunction in their homes because of drug or alcohol abuse. Erin's Fund has provided rent money for candidates who have completed treatment court and are moving to a sober home. In addition, Erin's Fund has brought inspirational speakers such as Chris Heron, I don't know if he was a pro-basketball player, I believe for the Boston Celtics, and brought him in to speak a few years, several years ago at no charge so that others could hear his positive message of overcoming his drug and alcohol addiction. Pledges to Erin's Fund help to fulfill our mission statement, which is, the Erin Jessica Morgan Drug and Alcohol Treatment Fund was established to provide charitable gifts to qualified individuals, organizations, and families whose members have been impacted directly or indirectly by their substance use disorder. And as we all know, the drug problem is rampant. In fact, when we started this ride 20 years ago, nobody wanted to talk about it. Everybody said, oh, not me, not my family. Well, anyone who says that they're not affected by drug or alcohol abuse somewhere in their family is probably lying or not admitting to it. But if you notice now in obituaries in the paper, people say he or she lost their battle with addiction, and it needs to be addressed. So that's why we have, as I said, it will be our final year this year. We're all getting, the committees getting a little bit older. And so we are, it will be, registration is at 9:00 AM on September 15th. The ride then takes off at 10:00. There are several different routes. One is only seven miles, which is on the trail, La Cuenca Heritage Trail, or you could go to Scranton High to Valley View Elementary School. That's 15 miles. There's one that's 33 miles, goes to Carbondale. One of 46 miles, which goes to Forest City. And then for the real bike enthusiasts, of which I am not, 65-mile ride, round-trip ride. And some of it is quite hilly, so it's for those who really are bikers and do this, when I say bikers, I mean bicycles, not motorbikes. And anyone who's interested in registering, it's www.tourdescranton.org. And if you register by September 12th, there's a discount on the fee. There's also a walk, too, on the Heritage Trail that you can register for. And before I finish, I also, I know, I think Joan commented on the police and the fire. I also want to commend the DPW because if they were the ones in charge of cleaning up around the square, it's unbelievable. I know there's still equipment there. There's some tables and chairs, and there is still some litter, but it looks like there's no way you would know that thousands and thousands of people visited this city over the four-day weekend because they did a phenomenal job of cleaning up. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Connors. That is all. It's on our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. You know, sometimes I wonder what the speeches I hear. You know, you don't hear a lot of, other than from law enforcement agencies or anything about the current people serving in council and mayor's office. Sometimes I think people just like getting screwed by local guys instead of an outsider. Anyway, there was a hoopla about De Napol's, the recycling center, and my recommendation is that we separate the barrels, bottles and glass, plastic bottles and glass, and steel and aluminum cans. Now, probably two or three years ago, I called them, maybe less, and they said that when a glass bottle breaks in the pack master, it, glass can, broken glass can get inside the cans and then it gets crushed up. They have to throw that stuff away. And they have a point there. He doesn't really like paying people probably $12 or $15 an hour, which is a good wage for the amount of skill involved. But, you know, it's really ridiculous that we don't do more recycling, and you would definitely need separate containers. It also was announced that hospital is going off of the for-profit rolls and they're going to become tax exempt. Well, that currently probably puts us at 40% tax exempt. And what I'd like to see is a citizens' board strictly exclusively from Scranton that sticks to their knitting and starts to try and do something with this by the state. If you people try to do something with it or the mayor, you're going to get consternation from representatives, state representatives, and it might hurt you more than help you, just like the parking garages. It wasn't a very big help to default on those, although it was portrayed as one, and it was probably a serious mistake. But I will add that Mayor Dougherty could have straightened out the parking authority and their accounting practices. They were handing out, handing in requests for $1 million or $1.5 million at a time, and it wasn't worth a high school senior government class fundraiser class. It really was not. It was, I could have wrote the same thing myself, and I am not qualified as an accountant. And fireworks, I had wished, I was there and I had wished I had a pair of goggles, but in many years, I've gotten hit with those papers that they packed them in, and you wouldn't hear any boom-boom without those papers. They have to be, so hopefully we can find a solution. It was a disappointment, but that's probably better off than having 10 or 15 people there with burnt paper in their eyes and such. And once again, on the election, you know, we hear all about gangs and things, and I heard on the Fourth of July, it was supposed to be at a yard party, and right away, that subject came up, which I totally disagree with. I don't want 10,000 people at the border every day, myself. I have my concerns, too. If we get a government in that wants to put the kiboshes of social security and freedom of choice and birth control and the works, we're in trouble. We're in trouble if that man makes it back. And as far as Kamala Harris, I'm glad that she was picked because the one thing I saw was Joe Manchin, who voted against the Voting Rights Act, talking about a mini, a mini primary. And no thanks, Joe. Stay independent. We don't want you anymore. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Coin Menucha. So much to say in so little time. First, I find it amazing, the new defined intent of the nepotism clause. As long, as long as you're not the person recommending them, even if you're over everyone who reviews them and are in the position to punish anyone who does not give a glowing review, it's all fine. Moving on, last section, we had a comment on the removal of the requirement for employees to be residents of the city. Thankfully for Mr. King, his reply was in fifth order when people could not respond. He said, maybe he was wrong and they are not desperate classes because, as I pointed out, it requires a protected class. So in fifth order, he said, maybe he intended a discriminated group. A discriminated group also requires a protected class. Last, he stated they could not table it because if they did, on return from the August break, it would have to go through a whole three steps again. As far as I know, that's wrong. When an item is tabled, it remains until it gets put back in order. The only time it has to start from page one on the process is when the yearly session expires as no old business carries over. I would expect you are aware of that, Council President King. Oh, my mistake. It just appears that you're still council president, as whenever a point relating to Robert's Rules pops up, such as a motion to amend or table, the current president turns in panic to you for the process, as well as your continued role in explaining the chair's business. Take off the training wheels. Again, moving on, last session, Mr. Smurl asked a few questions. Counsel's attorney did a good job on presenting the facts in the light most favorable to his client, and we'll get back to that. But there are inconsistencies. Mr. Smurl provided information that others had the same issue. He said it was hundreds. Counsel's attorney stated it was three. How did hundreds become three? Counsel attorney commented that Mr. Smurl's LLC was now paid in current as a mea culpa. That was never the issue. The issue was stated was, until it was brought to right by a right-to-know request, no bill was generated. It seems, we were told, that the system was down and transitioned. Maybe they did not process or communicate or run a comparison to verify anything, nor did Smurl LLC reconcile the books and discovered uncashed checks. Current now. It does not explain someone needing to do a right-to-know and you being one of the three, and as usual, no one is accountable. Moving sideways, you had conversed on the issue with counsel's attorney prior to it being exposed. Counsel and attorney, you request research the issue and brought it before the body. As far as I'm aware, Smurl LLC is not a city entity, and research and legal opinions for specific council members about non-city business runs afoul of that job title. City council's eternity is paid for the people, and the people should not be bearing the burden of your legal defense for your LLC. How was it paid? Did it come out of the city budget? Is it quid pro quo? Did he do pro bono work for you? As he has a direct financial interest in keeping the position, that puts the action in a questionable light, no matter how you say it was done. But that's right, ethics and words can be ignored when convenient, like nepotism that was already stated. I'll finish off by addressing another last-section comment. Mr. Smurl stated prior that council is a legislative branch and administration questions can't be addressed here. Then he also said he is not a lawyer and can't define terms. By inference, he stated that he is a legislator who makes the law but does not understand what he approves, that he will rubber stamp whatever comes down, even if he has no clue to the meaning of the legislation, and he is unwilling to require clarification or definitions. Sadly, the people have no legislative intent to refer back to, and that should be primary in a body passing legislation. Have a good evening, gentlemen, and keep stonewalling.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher, resident of the city. I'm sort of going to start where I left off at the last meeting. I was talking about the overlook on 307 and requested that a light be put there, admitting that it wasn't going to stop anything, but it maybe would slow down the fact that when it was really dark. Now, may I come up with these?
Can you give them to? Marie, I remember asking about a camera up there. Do you, you want a light up there?
A camera, well, you'd need a light with the camera, yes.
Okay. I did request, I sent that to the chief for the camera.
Well, thank you. I know some of us go by there a lot, but not all of you, so... Here's what it looks like today. Would that have made a difference? I don't know, but we need to do something. This is getting crazy for the people who don't know, it just, I don't know what they're using, if they're, come with a sledgehammer or what they, how they do it, but a lot of the stones that have been there since the 20s are, some of them have been thrown over the wall, I know that, but something needs to be done. Our police, you know, something just has to be done, or that's going to be going down the hill, too. Okay, now, moving on for a little bit. When is an AOG pool, is there a schedule for when that is going to start?
Marie, I have an update on all of the city pools and the park projects. I'll do that in fifth order. I'm going to list them all.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Now, the sidewalks. Who is responsible for sidewalks?
Well, you're responsible for the maintenance of your own sidewalks.
Well, I also put my sidewalks in.
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't cheap. I'm on a corner. But do we need, do people need to, each property have sidewalks?
Do, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Well, there are properties that don't have sidewalks at all.
Oh, yes. I've seen that throughout our neighborhood, going up River Street. A few of them don't have sidewalks.
Have you considered making that a requirement?
I can send that request to code enforcement to see if there is an ordinance requiring you to have sidewalks.
Yeah. I mean, those of us who do have sidewalks, you know, we have to shovel our snow off and, and we try to do the best we can, but...
Frank, will you, I don't know if it would be code enforcement or our law department who would give us that answer if it's a requirement.
I will, Mr. Smurl. And we'll also check the ordinances.
Okay. I agree with Lee that we need a Home Rule Charter group again. If you could put it on, I guess it's too late for the general election, but for next, for the primary next year, if you could do that, I think it would do us all. If you could do that, I think it would do us all goodness. And I was somewhat discouraged that our former mayor was released so quickly from his, the sentence that he was given. What was it, three years out of the seven years?
I am not sure, Marie. I didn't follow that at all.
Three or four, but it just... Okay, I'm over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Virgil Argento. Dr. Rothschild is coming up on her second term. Is there ever a chance that you could nominate her as the council president? I mean, it would be nice to have a female and Dr. Rothschild as the president. Now we could get to business. Are you aware the Villa Capri Cruisers Father's Day Car Show will no longer be held at Naught Park over an extra $5 charge? And regarding the ignorant comment by certain board members that they'll be back, they have nowhere else to go, wrong. It will now be held at McDade Park, that will be their new home after 30 years. Do we have a dollar amount on the cost for the DPW, the manpower, the landfill fee, and the overtime salaries regarding the trash removal at the LaFesta Italian this week? And correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the fee covers trash removal because when we were doing the Italian festival, our fee covered trash removal. And it was previously picked up by a Dunmore Trash Company, and no, not Mr. D. Naples. Will the city of Scranton be reimbursed for the services? And did they recycle the cardboard? Or was the trash and everything all mixed together? Is it common practice for council members to have keys to Naught Park facilities? And if not, Mr. Smurl, do you have keys to any buildings at Naught Park?
I'll have to check my key ring. I'm not sure if they still work.
Okay, and council has no standing to personally have keys to the park?
No, okay.
I would find that to be a conflict of interest.
Oh, okay, good.
I'm not looking to be a wise guy or have an ignorant comment. I'm just asking you, why would a council member, does Dr. Rothschild have a key?
I don't know.
Does Director Schuster have a key? Does Mr. King have a key? You don't own the park, you and your little crew up there? Maybe that's the reason why we're having a lot of issues up there, because you people think you own the park. There's a lot of people that can cut grass, just like you can. And there's a lot of people that can do plumbing and can fix the fountains, just like you can. I've been in the plumbing business for 30 years. It's our park, too. You don't own that park. Neither does your buddies. And you should not have a key to the park. And if you have one, I'm asking that you return the key. And concerning the salt shed at the DPW garage, there's going to be a new salt shed built off of Cabalso Avenue that's under the works now. And return the key, Mr. Smurl.
Not happening. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. First tonight, I want to talk about the cemetery. Over the weekend at the Washburn Street Cemetery, we found a bunch of headstones that were deliberately thrown over an embankment. The story that I'm hearing is a former owner back in the 90s who was ultimately incarcerated would deliberately tip over the stones. If the family did not pay $400, he would throw them over an embankment. We called the police and made a report. Also, I would like to thank Councilman Schuster for showing up two weeks ago. There wasn't many of us. But one of the things he did was, you can see a lot of those trees from the road, and upon working there, he found somebody laid the rest who was a veteran from the Battle of Antigua. It was very nice, and we put a flag there. So this Saturday, again from 8 until 2, we're going to have a cleanup at the Washburn Street Cemetery, and we could use everybody's help. I want to talk about 817 Crown Avenue. It was brought to my attention that somebody set up a mechanic shop there. They were working on cars all over the whole weekend and into the holiday, all hours of the night. That's 817 Crown. I also got a call from a friend of mine, 1600 Block of Washburn Street. There is a, there was work done back in February, and they put the temporary pavement over that on the opposite side of the road, the odd side. So 1600 Block, the odd side was just paved. Somebody tripped and fell over the weekend. A friend of mine has been trying to contact PA Water, but to no avail. So if somebody could check into that, I'd appreciate it. August 2nd was first Friday. It was also Meet the Mayor Day. All right, apparently she wanted to be there before she went out and took pictures later that evening. So I took it upon myself, since everybody here's, a portion of you has been ignored, I took it upon myself to walk in, and to my surprise, I was the only one there. The first 10 minutes, I spoke about my son and his passing and the nature of his passing, and an 11-year-old from Lafayette Street who tragically passed away as well. And I told her about my displeasure about the current climate. At that point, shortly thereafter, Sean McCandrick showed up as well. We talked about the dogs, the canines that she refused to take on, $250,000, including two police pursuit vehicles. It seemed like most of her answers were pre-programmed. We talked about blight and the fact that she's really not, I actually spoken to her about blight and the fact that she's really not from here initially. She didn't grow up in Scranton, so she really couldn't see the difference. Talked about the sewer authority, the increase to $220 as opposed to 63 because an increase should be only 1.9% per year. I also spoke to her about my displeasure with the roads, the ceiling, and the lack of inspection, which are now going to be in the hands of somebody from Luzerne County to take a look at her roads. I also spoke about the SPD testing and the Scranton Police Department, the way they're being tested. She had a little bit of a rude response. She said, "Are you doing this for Virgil's son?" No, Virgil's son was out in South Carolina during a hurricane. He got called back. And he was a brave police officer that should be working in the city of Scranton. Spoke about the homeless, lack of crosswalks throughout the school districts. Talked about a curfew. And, you know, I told her it does work in Luzerne County. She mentioned to me that there were 300 properties that she was notified by the county that the city didn't even know that they had. I said, "There were basically, look, we have eight code enforcement officers." And, you know, at that point, I'm surprised that they couldn't figure out what properties they were. So if one of yous want to look into them. I was walking away thinking that, you know, she was alone in the woods, armed, shooting at anything that moved and taking credit for anything that fell. All right, with this festival, we had a lot of roadwork done, and it was a fiasco today. We don't have pave cut inspectors. We're down three supervisors with a DPW superintendent, a recycling director, and a DPW director. Parks and Recreation is over budget with only one pool. You know, studies and other things, they don't work here. Consultants don't work here, okay? You could be any Pat, Chris, or Tom with an H, could sit back and point. It takes a leader to change the city. It takes somebody with a backbone and a winning team, not an expansion team. Good night, council.
Anyone else?
One more thing. God bless Hoppy.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
I have some comments. Once again, I know this city is far from perfect. It obviously needs, you know, a lot of things that need to be addressed. Not going to deny that. Absolutely does. And quite frankly, anybody can walk around and pick out things that need to be addressed. That being said, before I started here in January '22, this city was distressed for 30 years financially. We are no longer distressed. We refinanced a $36 million bond, which resulted in $2 million of savings to the residents of the city in terms of interest payments. We improved our bond rating from no bond rating to BBB minus to BBB plus bond rating for the city. You know, we're upgrading our parks, including NaOG, Connel Park, Weston Field, all getting new pools, skate parks, pickleball courts, and things like that. And all those projects, all those contracts have been awarded, and all that's happening. We've increased code enforcement in the city in trying to address blight of properties. We've been running paving projects over the last few years. City Hall, as we can tell, is getting upgraded, which is one of the most beautiful buildings architecturally in the city. We settled four union contracts. We've upgraded fire and police equipment and technology. And does the Home Rule Charter need to be updated? I would be for that, absolutely. But once again, it's not all doom and gloom. We have a Tour de France or a Tour de Scranton with the biking. We have the Scranton Half Marathon, Scranton Steamtown Marathon, LaFesta Italian. And it goes on and on about all the great things happening in the city. I've seen a ton of restaurants open in this city that didn't exist a long time ago. And now you can walk around the city, and I'm proud. Proud to be a city resident. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Do we have a lot of work to do? Absolutely, we do. But I believe that this city is a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. So first, I'd like to thank Ms. Kathy Carrera and also Frank Bollenberg. I kept them busy over the month of August, so thank you very much for your research on the proclamation. And Frank, thank you for filling the emails and addresses and properties that I sent over during that break. A lot of properties were sent over during the break, and I'll follow up with you via email on each of those that were sent over. One thing I got several phone calls about was the work that's going on on North Washington Avenue near Marywood with American Water. So I know we got some of the answers, I'd say maybe first, second week of August. But if we could reach out to them and get a solid answer to the work being done and a timeline for a permanent fix. So a lot of the residents over there are concerned. There's a sewer line running above the ground or above the streets, and they'd like to know, you know, what's the timeline on that permanent fix? So if we could...
I'll get that information.
Thank you very much. Some things to follow up with since before the break. There was some discussion had with the mayor about Kaiser Valley, North Scranton meeting, getting a meeting with the timeline of those projects, also East Scranton, Stormwater. So if we could reach out to the mayor to see when that meeting will take place as she... It was supposed to take place last week of July, third week of July, and then possible August. Now we're into September, so if we could just get a date on that meeting.
I will.
Thank you. We had a conversation a few weeks prior to August with the zoning hearing board. They came to us with some issues that they were encountering within the last ordinance of 2023. So do we, does anyone on the council know where we're at with those conversations? Do we plan on...
I do, Mr. Gattens, and he is working with the zoning board with their questions. We should have them shortly.
Okay, I know.
And their questions and their comparisons of what it was compared to what it is now.
Yeah, that's a conversation we need to continue to have because I know they're coming upon issues that they can't make solid rulings on without an update. Or at least a black and white, black and white language in that ordinance. So something we need to do. I'm glad the salt shed was discussed. In this meeting tonight, you'll see on the agenda, there is a location for the salt shed. It is, and it's always been stated in every conversation I've had about it. It's been stated South Scranton or West Scranton over August. I got a few phone calls. We received a couple of emails about the salt shed being placed at the Sirente Center. I think we cleared it up in caucus that this wasn't the case, but there was possibly, the city was measuring the location and checking the location. But we've been told in caucus that that's not the case, that there's going to be some other locations for that salt shed. I got a, we got some messages yesterday, 614 Subner Avenue. This is, this will be probably the only address I'll give you tonight. So 614 North Subner Avenue, there's trees that are overgrowing the sidewalk that residents cannot walk on the sidewalk. They have to go out onto the road. If we could send that over. Thank you all for bearing with me. I noticed coming in tonight, it was something I discussed prior to August, on 7th Ave exit on the McDade Expressway, I see there's more tents as the leaves are going to start to come down. We're going to see some more of the encampments that we've discussed about at length. Let's see if we can get an update from the Homeless Task Force as to some of our neighboring communities have addressed the issue in their communities. Are we getting an influx of individuals that are coming from other communities that may have cracked down on camping out of doors? And maybe we can get that info from the task force.
I will, sir.
Thank you. Prior to the break, I also spoke with Eileen Cipriani about the monument in Providence Square. An automobile crashed into that monument, and the monument is cracked. When I spoke to her before the August break, she said that they were reaching out to insurance, and they were looking to see if insurance could cover it, that they were waiting on the answer from them. So could we just reach out to Eileen and see if there's been any update on the Providence Square?
I'll ask that question.
Thank you very much. And the last one I'm going to have is our open positions. I think during public comment tonight, some open positions were discussed. I know we also have the DPW director and the OECD director, as well as some of the other coordinator positions. So can we reach out and ask the HR department what open positions we have and any updates on filling those positions?
I'll get that information, sir.
Thank you very much, and thank you for bearing with me. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. It's good to be back tonight. I think we enjoyed the time off, but it's good to get back to business here. So I wanted to bring up a number of things, some that have come up over that break. And first, I just wanted to touch on the Unsheltered Task Force because I haven't received any recent updates or notifications of meetings. So I did want to inquire with the administration about when another meeting will be held.
I'll ask.
Thank you. And the Novemprino splash pad, I know there's been complaints in the past about it. And I was there a few weeks ago with my daughter, and the pad, the surface that the splash pad is on, is falling apart and crumbling and to the point where she was bringing me pieces of it. And I said, "What's this?" And then we looked, and you could just pick up pieces of it. So I'm really concerned because that's only a few years old, and that shouldn't be happening already. And I want to know if it's still under warranty and what we can do to repair it because a lot of money has gone into that. And the kids should be able to enjoy that without it falling apart. And the city looking to put other splash pads in different locations throughout the city. I don't want to see that be a problem with the other ones, too. It's really disappointing. And someone had come to me with concerns about a lot of open burning happening in her neighborhood. And she wanted a copy of the ordinance that we have. So you can send that to me, and I'll forward it along.
We will. We'll forward it tomorrow.
Great. And on the subject of the salt shed, I had been contacted by neighbors about the potential location to be on Colfax Avenue where the Sirente Center is located. And the problem being with the current salt shed that DPW has there on Poplar, that's falling apart. We already knew that that needed to be replaced, but it can't be in that location because the DEP said it couldn't with it being in a floodplain. So they were looking for a new location, and it's not going to be there at the Sirente Center. They were looking at that as an option, but determined that that's not going to be the case. And so it seems like they might have found another better solution and place where it won't be right in a neighborhood. And so I appreciate the... be right in a neighborhood. And so I appreciate the neighbors coming forward about that with their concerns that were certainly justifiable. And also on the utility pavings that previously had a lot of conversations about and continue to receive complaints about specifically on Myrtle, but a number of the projects that happened over the summertime with American Water. I know there was supposed to be a meeting between the administration and American Water a few weeks ago, but I haven't received any further updates. So I wanted to find out what occurred with that meeting, and to my knowledge, further work hasn't taken place.
I'll get a report on that meeting, Doctor.
Okay, thank you. And I know I sound like a broken record with some of these properties, but it's really the ones that I'm just not receiving the responses on or continue to see issues with and get complaints about. So 429 Prescott Avenue, the property that had a fire a number of years ago, and, you know, at first the owner was going to remodel it and then didn't do anything to it. So then I think it was going to be on the demo list. Don't know what happened there. And there's been a history of squatters being there at the property, too. And it's sometimes unsecured, which it's unsecured again where the plywood that was on the front door is pulled off. So I don't know if there's squatters there again. But if we could have SPD go to that property as well as code enforcement to make sure it's properly secured. And then I want an answer if it is going to be placed on the demo list or what is happening at this property, because it's been a number of years. And one of the people who often complained to me about it and lived next door in the apartment building has since moved out of town. I'm sure that that didn't help her displeasure with living here in the city.
Yeah, I'll contact the police department. And we also have a new blight coordinator, demolition specialist, and I'll ask that question.
Excellent. And one other property that was on the demo list and was taken off, that 1068 Cottage Avenue, I'd like an update on what's happening with that, because it was taken off. The owners finally said that they were going to do something with the property, but to my knowledge, nothing has happened, and it's still a mess and a lot of animals going in and out of property and problems with the neighbors. So if we can find out what's happening with that one, if there's been any tickets issued as of late.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And that's everything that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I had a couple. So I also received complaints and concerns about 614 North Subner Avenue property with an extreme hedge overgrowth. It's extended over the sidewalk and impairing drivers' line of sight. To be honest with you, I think I got this same concern last year, because when I saw the pictures that I received, I just, you know, remembered it. So in addition to that, you know, a concerned resident, you know, he's walking his dog, and it's very tough because they have to go onto the road, and his dog almost got hit. So this is becoming a huge safety issue. And then also, the DPW, when they're plowing, it presents an issue for them as well as safety issue. So I know Mr. Schuster brought it up, but I wanted to address it, too. And with that said, also, was also referenced to this complaint, also across the street, there's a pot. We've talked about pots before. And, you know, the ordinance and the new zoning, so... And I guess this pot has been there for five years. So we need code enforcement to get over and take care of this safety issue. And then secondly, I'm not sure if it's 210 or 212 Larch Street. My understanding, and I got pictures, Mr. Bolenberg, I'll send them to you tomorrow, but it looks like another porch collapse in the making. And the pictures you'll see is there's no spindles on the porch, but they ran some rope in some type of pattern. And the wood surrounding it doesn't look too good. And my understanding is, you know, there's other issues of blight with regards to this property, and there's rats that are coming to and from this property. So this property is in need of some attention by code enforcement, please.
I'll send that out.
Thank you. Finally, so over the course of our recess, a few crossing guards, school crossing guards have reached out to me. And, you know, we all know they're our first line of defense for our kids every day. You know, and they brave the elements every day. And my understanding, I'm getting complaints from them that they're receiving verbal abuse and threats from motorists and parents. So it's a tough job. It's tough to keep them. Their concern is their rate of pay. All right? And it's a little confusing because we've had some dialogue about this, but it's a little confusing. I know that Solicitor Gobright isn't here, but I initially reached out to him. And I know that we share the expense, the school district and the city. My understanding is they're trying to find an MOU that the school district prepared at one time. I know there was discussion a couple of years ago, you know, looking for an increase in pay. They can't really find the MOU. But my concern is, so we have to continue this dialogue and communication. The school year already started. And, you know, I know that Mr. Dominus, who does a great job for the city, sent us a redacted payroll report or a register, but it says rate of pay $20. So to me, it looks like the city's saying we pay them $20 an hour, and I don't believe that's true. I think the confusion is $20 a day. All right? And they're assuming that it's a total hour, half an hour in the morning when they go, and a half an hour at the end of the day when they go, when the students are dropped off. Either way, I know personally, driving in the morning on the way to school, that these crossing guards, you know, they definitely spend more than a half an hour in the morning. All right? You know, they're there beforehand on Main Avenue, North Main Avenue up near Shifts with that project I'm going to talk about next. It's crazy up there, the stop and start of traffic. So their ask is minimal. They want an increase. So my understanding is that it's $10 an hour. Okay? So that means $20 a day to brave the elements, to take on abuse and harassment from motorists and some parents, and brave the elements for our kids. So I think, and I know there's some dialogue, I would like to make a motion that we continue to collaborate with the district, and I know they're on board, too, collaborate with the district and continue dialogue so we can, you know, clarify the amount they make. No matter what it is in front of me, it's not enough, and that we work together and provide these crossing guards some more money.
I'll second that motion.
I would also second that.
We have a motion and a second to keep our conversation going with the school district and the city of Scranton. On the question?
On the question, you know, we had some emails and went back and forth. One of the questions I asked was, can the district or the city provide us when the last time an increase occurred for the crossing guards? I know my recollection goes back to 2013 or 2014, but when that last increase for the crossing guards took place?
I'll ask that question.
Thank you.
And we're still waiting on the MOU.
Yeah. I know you already asked the question, but we're still waiting on the answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question. I'm just afraid if we don't continue this conversation and waiting for bits and pieces of information, that the year's going to pass us, and it's not going to happen.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
And one more piece. So I was talking about North Scranton or North Main Avenue in North Scranton. It's at least two school years that I've witnessed that... I know Pennsylvania American Water is digging up that street. It's atrocious. It's a minefield. And right now, they're at Shifts, near Shifts or Toyota. I'm getting some information, maybe it's the city's finishing up the work that the water company did. It doesn't matter. At this point, what I would like, because at the end of the day, you know, through our ordinance, it's curb-to-curb paving. So, and that's the responsibility of American Water is doing the work. So, and I get stopped all the time saying, "Mark, what's going on here? Like, is this ever going to end?" So for, you know, if you could reach out to American Water and ask them, you know, a timeline, like, you know, even something, an estimate, when they'll be done, when this road will be repaired finally.
I will, Mr. McAndrew.
Thank you.
Just to add a little bit on to that, thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I mean, I think the next step would be to reach out to them to see if they could come in for caucus. We have several projects that are going on right now, that North Washington Avenue project, the Myrtle Street project, and the project that Mr. McAndrew's talking about. And if we can't get some kind of answer, maybe we could have them come in for a caucus.
I'll reach out to Mr. Roselinski and bring him in.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I have a lot of requests that we received over the month. I won't go through every one of them. I'll just give the 500 block of Front Street, rear 520 North Irving, East Mountain Road and Hillary Avenue, one-way sign on Main Avenue on the Expressway, 8 of Quincy, 5 of Prospect, and on and on. We did not forget about any of these. Mr. Bolenberg has all of these in, as is everyone else is into the property department. So we will get all of those answers hopefully by next week and be able to update everybody on their questions. Before we had left for break, we were discussing the crosswalks being painted by other schools and asked if these schools would be a priority, and they were. There are a few intersections that were not completed, one by Robert Morris Elementary School, intersection of Boulevard and Columbia. That is because that street is going to have a utility cut. And there's another one on Penn Avenue, St. Clair, St. Paul's, Wyoming and Greenridge. That also, just one of those crosswalks wasn't done. That's also because of a pave cut. And Scranton High School, seven out of nine of the crosswalks were done over. That's taking a little longer than normal because we have to have flaggers there, we have to have the police there, and then we have to coordinate our DPW there to also do the painting itself. So that's taking a little bit longer, but it will be done. And also Lincoln Jackson Academy, they have two crosswalks pending for that school. The update that I'm going to give you is on all of our city parks projects that we have, so we can finally get this cleared up and tell you what is on and what is not happening. As of right now, we have over $16 million invested in our city parks. Weston Field Skate Park is current budget is $950,000. This was won by Artesian Skate Parks, won the project. They will be in contact, or they have been, with Bizarre Skate Shop in Scranton. They also plan to have two public meetings in the area, and they will unveil all of their ideas at these meetings. And then the second meeting will be to show changes in any of their plans or their designs, depending on what they come up with, with the criticisms or the changes that the neighbors or the skaters would want to have. They also have an entire 3D design concept made up, but that will be, they will bring that out with the first meeting, when they meet with everybody. So that's the skate pool. Weston Pool, that was engineering firm was BKP. It was $3,600,000 was budgeted. The budget process was won by D&amp;M Construction over Open Gov procurement, and their current contract that they have is $3,193,000. They did apply for all of the performance bonds and payments that are required with the city, as well as all their permitting. So that pool is starting now. Capous Avenue Splash Pad, that was designed by McLean Associates. $500,000 was budgeted for the playground. $1 million was budgeted from the ARPA funds for the splash pad. The city has procured the splash pad and all of the equipment for that project, and also the playground equipment. So that project is going out for bid, I believe it is this week. The Connell Pool and the fencing project up at Connell Park, that project was $1,025,000. It was budgeted for that. D&amp;M Construction is the contractor on that pool, and Allstate Fencing is the vendor for the fencing. That construction is ongoing now. So the Robinson Park, that is designed by Tom McLean, the budget was $963,354. Half of this was funded by ARPA, and half was funded by DCNR. Chiluski was a contractor. The trail layout is done. Some extra stone and placement of stone up there was added for controlling some of the stormwater roll-off. The basketball hoops and courts were all up there. All the equipment has arrived. So that should be within the next week or two up and running. The city did also procure a fishing dock and a kayak launch to be put at the lake. So, and that will always also be added. Oakmont Park, Chiluski is a contractor. The bid was $215,296 was obligated through ARPA, and $193,245 of that has been dispersed. $332,200 was also budgeted through a grant match. $226,925 of that also has been dispersed. And that park is open. Weston Pool Rehab Project, the bids were received this week, and it will be funded by CDBG and DCNR. The current budget for that is $396,104. The playground equipment was purchased from General Recreation via corporate pricing through Co-Stars. So that equipment has already been purchased. Naog Pool, which has been started, if anyone values see that. BKP is engineering firm. It was funded by, budgeted with ARPA, LSA grant and city grant match of $4,567,741. ARPA was $3 million, LSA was $1 million, and the city's grant match was $567,741. Multiscape is the contractor up there, working now. The city has also received all the proper documents from them, all of their permits, and all of the proper paperwork has been submitted. And of course, their performance bonds are included in that. So as of August 22, Multiscape has started. They've started with the fencing, if you go up there, and I've seen they're doing some other work up there right now. Multiscape is expected to complete most of the sidewalk before the cold weather hits. And once that does, they will cease work until the warmer months come back, and then they will finish the final parts during the spring. And they hope to have a functional site to be open by the summer 2025. Naog Park, multi courts engineered by Riley Associates, and RACP grant and the city grant match funded with $600,000 each and for a total of $1.1 million. Billy Barrett Park, that is being paved. The entire project was $186,200, and that is currently under construction. The Butterfly Park up at Naog Park, this was originally started by Bod Gattens, the chairperson for the Scranton National Recreation Authority, and they have been working on this for a few years now. I'm glad to see this has finally gotten up off the ground. The project will be for a, basically a handicap playground at Naog Park, but accessible to all. The design services were bid out and won by Barry Isaac, $48,000. The playground equipment was bought from Recreation Resource. They will be doing the delivery and start the installation that is scheduled for late September. And the rest of that project for all of the other parts is currently out for bid for completion of that. So that is great to see that playground. And also, the playground, really what we wanted to do up there, and the Recreation Authority wanted us to do was do a huge project up there. But when you find that one swing can cost $65,000 for handicap swing, you'll understand why we had to cut the project back. And it is going to go now into three stages, and hopefully each year forward, they will add the next stage to that. But that is in the works. Novembreno Playground Upgrade is completed and open. Connors Park, that was all done over. That is completed, and that is also open. The Mini Park behind Engine 8, that was upgraded, and all that playground is completed. All of that's, all of those are open. And Frank, I will give you this, and you'll be able to add this into next week if you want to see that.
Thank you.
So with that, with all the parks pretty much being well underway, and I realize there's much more work to do and to complete all of these projects, and I will continue to work with the administration to keep moving on parks and recreation. and I will continue to work with the administration to keep moving on parks and recreation for our kids. But now I would like to go start addressing a different problem we have, which is abandoned homes and blighted properties. So I'll explain what we do now is when we get a call for abandoned or blighted properties, we will send code enforcement out to inspect them. So if they are issued a ticket and no response to it, then that will turn into a citation. And then again, if no one shows up or answers to that, which is, seems to be pretty common, then that will then go to a magistrate and basically wind up as a warrant. And then the magistrate will have a hearing for it. And normally, no one shows up for these, and it just seems to have died there. So when we see all these blighted properties and overgrown areas, it is, there's multiple reasons. A lot of the properties were purchased by investors that said they were going to be building in the future. Most of the time, nothing happens with these properties. They just remain untouched for many years and become blighted. Some of the properties, though, do belong to city residents and taxpayers. And some inherit these problems. And really, a lot of people do not have the money to invest back into these properties, elderly people and stuff that these things are left to them. So there lies another problem, which again, they turn into blighted properties. So I had requested a meeting, and we had it this morning, with Mayor Cognetti, Alien Supriani, and Attorney Cotillo. I had asked the administration if they would look into, when I researched something that we'd be able to do for abandoned and blighted properties is take these properties into what's a conservatorship. That is, if you look that up in PA Act 135. This basically allows individuals or entities such as the City of Scranton to take these properties and into a conservatorship and pretty much either figure out what we're going to do if we're going to clean them, if we're going to try to sell these to neighbors, or if we get groups of contractors, some other way that we can start revitalizing all of these properties that are just laying idle right now. So we're hoping to find developers, well, I am, and develop a plan to get back into our neighborhood. So, but I do believe that if we notify someone that we are actually taking possession of their properties instead of sending them citations or whatever else we do, that they pretty much ignore. I believe this may get, may get their attention. I know somebody called me and said they were going to be taking a property. I think I would be a little more concerned over that than a $100 citation. So as I went to the meeting, Attorney Cotillo also provided me with what he has been working on on blight issues and dealing with blight in the city. Proposing of potential legislation, potential funding, and there's a lot of other things. There's a lot of things we have to do before we can go and just take properties off of people. But I realize this is the beginning, and it is going to be a long process. But of course, I'm ready and counsel, and we will do whatever we have to do to support this so that we can eventually start to take these properties back or at least get the people to move forward on cleaning them and maybe get them back on the tax rolls. And that is all I have, Mr. McCandry.
5B for introduction and ordinance. Approving and accepting the City of Scranton capital budget, which includes a capital reserve fund spending plan for the year 2025, pursuant to Section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter, and file to Council Number 11 of 2024.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
So moved.
On the question?
On the question, we said the hearing for this is going to be on the 24th of September?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I do have some questions on this, but I will ask them at the hearing.
Yeah, on the question, so I mean, this is my fourth capital budget presented to us. And I think three out of the four years, maybe four, the mayor's put in plans to purchase another building or expand City Hall. I'm against it. I was against it then. I'm against it now. You know, and the rumor was the place next door. But Fidelity can't, you know, straighten out their own business because they're, you know, they were trying to move. But either way, you know, buying a building next door, if that's the intent, taking it off the tax rolls and space that I don't believe that's needed. And we're putting a ton of money into refurbishing this beautiful building, which I think is adequate for the services that are provided. So I'll vote to push this through, or not push it through, but to move it. But every year it's in there, and I don't like it. And I still don't like that that piece is in there of expanding City Hall.
On the question, I'll move to introduce it, and we'll obviously need more discussion on it. And I look forward to the caucus that we'll have about the budget where we can ask additional questions. I do appreciate the, some of the changes that were made this year to the layout of it and how I feel like it's more thoughtful for what's included for future years in the budget and, you know, where all of the money would be coming from, whether it be grants. And I think that it just looks different, it's more readable and understanding and helpful for the future budgets with the changes that have made, been made this year.
Thank you. I also just a comment on our capital budget and capital reserve spending plan. First, I want to thank you to Matt Dominus Nighting Supriani for redoing, redesigning and doing the layout of the capital budget and the capital reserve spending plan. It is a brand-new layout. It is much easier to follow than the previous ones were. The first columns kind of describe the department it's for or in the project, and then it goes into amount of years it's going to be financed for. And it also gives the funding sources and also gives the project descriptions, which if you looked at last year's, none of that was really had any kind of order. So I know Matt Dominus really did a lot of work on this. So I believe we have a lot of work done there by Matt, and we do appreciate it. So, and right now, I believe we have over $3 million funded so far. And then this evening in Fifth Order, we are also looking at transferring another $2 million from interest from the ARPA money and to move it into this capital budget. So this is just, this shows you just another great job done by Matt Dominus, our finance director. And I'm glad he stayed. Anything else on the question? All in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a city clerk to place a legal notice in the newspaper summarizing the proposed capital budget and to include locations where copies of the capital budget can be viewed by the public.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to place legal notice in the newspaper for the capital budget. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for the capital budget to be held on Tuesday, September 24th at 5:45 PM.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to schedule a public hearing on the capital budget. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance. Amending filed to Council Number 98, 2023, an ordinance entitled, "General City Operating Budget 2024 to properly account for the application of the proceeds of the General Obligation Funds Series of 2024, which were used to refund the city's General Obligation Note Series of 2016 by increasing the debt proceeds account, as noted, increasing the OPEX 2016 GEO note account, as noted, by $30,029,34.25, and adding a new expense line item account, as noted, titled, "2024 Series GEO Bond SPA Refund in the amount of $1,143,992.50."
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance. Amending filed to Council Number 98, 2023, an ordinance as amended entitled, "Appropriating Funds for the Expenses of the City Government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2024 to and including December 31st, 2024, by the adoption of the General City Operating Budget for the year 2024, so as to transfer an amount not to exceed $132,000 from the Bureau of Administration contingency account, as noted, to fund clerical union raises that were not identified in the 2024 operating budget."
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution. Approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R. 6138, currently owned by AARK Hospitality Dixon City TK LLC and located at 411 Commerce Boulevard, Dixon City, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18519, to Sriji Mart LLC, located at 338 Franklin Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table 5E.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table Item 5E. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 at 5:45 PM. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution. Ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $810,000 to be used towards the City of Scranton multimodal Webster Avenue pedestrian bicycle vehicle infrastructure project.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for an introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC to provide fiber optic cable and broadband services.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution. Amending Resolution Number 91 of 2024. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds to perform stormwater improvements at various areas of interest within the City of Scranton to amend funds.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution. Amending Resolution Number 94 of 2024. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds to perform disaster mitigation for the Lindy Creek Tributary to amend project funding.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution. Amending Resolution Number 325 of 2023 entitled, "Amending Resolution Number 69, 2022, a resolution as amended, entitled, 'Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050 to reallocate funds from various budgeted ARPA accounts to allow for focus and funding of disaster relief efforts and stormwater mitigation, development and remediation of pool complexes within the city, and to effectuate ongoing stewardship of taxpayer dollars, as amended, to rebudget funds.'"
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, could we ask the administration as to what the percentage of funds that have already been earmarked and allocated to its projects are and what the remaining funds left over at this point in time are from the ARPA, from the total ARPA funds?
I'll ask those questions, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5K for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the allocation of $2 million of funds from the balance of interest accumulated on the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of, to the City, to the Capital Reserve Fund.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5L for introduction, a resolution. Amending Resolution Number 228 of 2023 entitled, "Ratifying and Approving the City's Acceptance and Administration of Grant Funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $500,000 to be used for the Naog Multipurpose Courts and Pavilion Project."
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5L be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5M for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Scranton Police Department and the Scranton School District regarding the policies and procedures for school resource officers.
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5M be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5N for an induction, a resolution. Ratifying the amendments to Resolution Number 335 of 2023 entitled, "Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Borton Lawson Engineering, Inc. to perform City of Scranton's request for North Scranton Stormwater Engineering Services to include additional services and vendors' updated fee schedule."
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5N be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5O for an induction, a resolution. Ratifying amendments to Resolution Number 336 of 2023 entitled, "Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Borton Lawson Engineering, Inc. to perform City of Scranton's request for Manuka and West Scranton Stormwater Engineering Services to include additional services and vendors' updated fee schedule."
At this time, entertain a motion that Item 5O be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order, no business at this time. Seventh Order, 7A, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, filed to Council Number 26, 2024. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD 2024 Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Home Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1st, 2024.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development? What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order, 8A, filed to Council Number 26, 2024.
This ordinance was taken from the table and placed in Seventh Order for a final vote this evening. If there is no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone, this meeting is adjourned.